... and the principal, everybody that worked with cooks, everybody else that worked on our refreshments here at the Hamilton PK this evening, and we certainly appreciate all that. Mr. Snyder will appreciate you all again next year. We certainly do appreciate the hospitality. We'll do two LSIC meetings, I own our regular business, so we'll just try to proceed from there. Let's start with approval of the minutes since September the 6th, 2016, regular meeting. Get a motion please. This is did make the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baker, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this is the time when you can have people who can sign in to make comments to the board. Mr. Ellison might sign in? Okay, we didn't have anyone sign in this evening. Typically, if anyone who wants to address the board, as long as they sign in prior to the meeting, then they can address the board. Now, just so you'll be aware of that, when they do sign in like that, since they aren't our agenda, we can't interact with those people. But we certainly listen to them, and if there are things we feel are relevant or pertinent, we need to act on them. Kind of let Mr. Beckett know that later on, or he picks up on it himself. Before we go any further, I would like to introduce everybody that's here this evening that's associated with the board and the central office staff. I want to start with Mr. Bill Lempel, his assistant superintendent, many of these people I'm sure you know. Then Brenda Paus, she's the executive superintendent for the super, uh, the executive secretary to the superintendent. Now, we have the board members. This is Carol Schmidt, Rowdy Rodney Rowdy Baker. I'm Steve Griesley. Our superintendent Jeff Beckett, vice president of the board Greg Curry, and member Larry Wilpers. To go on further a little round, over here we have our treasurer and just started this year with us, Ray Ellis. I have Ray, and then, of course, there's Davis Snyder, the principal of the Franklin County Hospital. The one that's acting studious is Kirk King, he works in federal programs. And beside Kirk, we have another, not a new person for our county, but a new person in a new position, and that's Greg Gosny. He's the director of maintenance now. I commended Ray or Greg on what a wonderful job he's done in the first few months of his job. He has a very difficult job, and I think it's even more difficult than he thought. There's always something to be covered about in his position, but we're happy to have him. Okay. From there then, we're going to go down, we'll do our reports. First, the LSIC report, the high school's move there first, so Mr. Snyder. You have the floor, sir.
Well, good evening, guys. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you about some of the great things that are happening in Lincoln High School. I'm going to introduce to you some of our LSIC members. First, you're going to meet James Snyder, the principal. We have Mr. Terry Christian, Mr. Matthew Miller, Mike McCormick, Tom Finescu, Randy Ashley, Holly Bryant. Two of our student representatives, Messina Blankenship, Ryan Miller. We have our service personnel, Chris Wilpersen, Dr. Scott Smith, and T.G. Hoffman. After we finish our presentation, I'll do the very best that I can to answer some of the questions that you may have based on our presentation. The State Department about a year ago, I believe, came up with an initiative called Learning Schools. I think, Hamlet, did you guys pilot that? That actually gave teachers responsibility, as well as some leadership roles. So, in the spirit of that, tonight, we're going to allow one of our teachers, who is actually our LSIC president, present to you some of our information. So, with that, I'll give you this.
Hi. I'm just going to pass out our presentation. I just wanted to say how awesome our school is. When we met, the few times we met before we came up, when we were coming up with our presentation, there were very few things we could come up with that were problems with our school. Even our student members could, we racked our brains trying to come up with things that were problems. And I think that's a great thing for, you know, our rise in test scores, things are, things are coming up. And we are going to let our student members present the presentation. So, thank you.
Once again, as you all, just once again, please do yourself so we can recall, please.
Hi, I'm Messina Blankenship, and I'm part of the PIS team at our school, I'm part of the girls soccer team, and SC at Longwood.
Hello, I'm Ryan Miller, acting president of the student council of Lincoln County Hospital, also the chief of our new law enforcement safety program.
So, we have students who are interested in math. We have AA tutoring, AA is like our whole group, and we have two math tutors that are willing to take their free time in AA to help students in any problems that they have in math. We have, we're looking to continue the after-school tutoring program, it was basic tests last year. The AMP and AMP classes are a big thing of ours for now. A lot of students, basically, their last year's scores being put into AMP classes that struggle with any math and math students. And we are taking the SMI, which is this last math inventory, and it gives kind of a deadline of where students are right now, and then we take it again at the end of the year to see if they were.
Okay, and reading, language arts, we have teachers looking at test data to determine which students need additional programs to help their literacy skills, their fluency skills, and their reading comprehension. We also have reading 180 classes. These are double block to give, are to ensure that students have enough time to focus on improving their comprehension and fluency skills. Okay? We have Sys, uh, System 44. It's a program that builds levels of fluency for, levels of fluency and comprehension, sorry. And non-readers, for non-readers and students who fluency levels are well below their grade level. Okay, we also do the SRI. Students take their SRI a few times a year, get the initial score, and then we make it a golden proof from that score throughout the year when we, when we retake that. Uh, the SRI provides us the tools to help further advance our reading comprehension levels. Okay, and just to, just to put out there, our reading scores, senior class right now, when they were sophomores, they had, they were at 37% proficiency, okay? And as juniors, they went to 50% proficiency, which is an increase to the state average. Okay, and graduation rate, we look to maintain the state average on the gra, uh, the graduation rate, and the state average is 8.5%, and we were above that last year, we moved it to 19.
That information is not available. I do know that Kevin Stottman told me that we had 17 dropouts last year, which is the lowest we've ever had, and then 19 lowest proficiency, and last year we had 17, which would impact the match.
Um, some school programs that are continuing have always been a big success. We're, our school's very connected to students and parents on social media. We have a YouTube channel, we have over 1,300 followers on Twitter, and we have over 800 likes on Facebook. And this is a simple and easy way for students and parents to connect to the teachers and staff members. So, another big program that we are continuing is called Summit, is our second year. The new program that's scheduled forward is school-wide call of Summit. I myself am a part of the college summit team, and over the summer, we flew to Baltimore, Maryland, and we had a three-day workshop that was from seven till eleven every single day. And we have many workshops that trained us with the skills and the tools that we need to take back to our school to help influence students to go to college or any secondary education, and to let the students know that college is an option for everyone.
Okay, talk about CTE and simulated workplace. I'm part of two simulated workplaces. It gives the kids a chance to be part of a business and learn the skills necessary to run a business with an instructor just overseeing. They have weekend meetings, usually on Wednesday, but, I mean, they make their own policy procedures, so it's all up to them. It gives us the, uh, the necessary skills we need to run a business, and all, all the workers, employees, we call them, in the simulated workplace, have a job, whether it's a supervisor or down to just a basic worker. As you go out throughout high school, you can step up into those supervisory ranks. Law and public safety, our new law and public safety, it's also a member of the simulated workplace I have at second and third. We make policy procedures, we're just, we're working on getting everything set up and get everything ordered for its brand-new program. We start out by clocking in with a thumbprint scanner, and it clocks us in and clocks us out every day. Okay, and talking about the new law and public safety class, we just started defensive tactics, just, we're still waiting on a lawsuit class, I mean, it takes a lot to get this in motion. We do PT Monday, Fridays, it's similar to JROTC, and we've already learned how to lift fingerprints from crime scenes and like, and how to fill out criminal complaints and send that to the magistrate's office. We've already learned a lot of information about the criminal justice system and like different codes that we need to know, and how to make certain charges stick, and what you need to do, like really serious guidelines.
So, another big successful thing at our school is the food pantry. Carrie's a social worker at our school, is in charge of that, and we have some really awesome numbers for this. They give weekend food bags to 40 students at the high school, plus hence 20 food bags to students at Gone Valley. The goal is to want to extend the program through the summertime, and that would be be able to make four hundred bags each week for students to take home and come and give to school. And over holidays and long breaks, there are food boxes provided for children's families per week. Another program at our school is the PIS, and that seems to have positive influence support. And I myself am also part of PIS, and we have a lot of upcoming events for the students. You have to have certain credentials and things like that to be able to go on these ones activities, and we have a fundraiser coming up September the 30th, and it is a dance after the football game in the gym. There's other pictures, and it is a competitive thing. We have, it's like the food drive at our school, and for each AA, they bring a food drive each weekend, and it's a sports activity.
Okay, health and safety. Our special education staff and our crisis team have been certified in CPI training, crisis prevention, and intervention. Okay, Officer Lawrence is just a follow-up on the AL's training, uh, AL's training with our school officials. Okay, and then Officer Whitman has been hired as our new school resource officer. And then we've added the law and public safety program, which also does patrol, I forgot to mention. Uh, we control different areas around the school, two people are assigned each day, and then I was chief, I direct certain people to do different jobs. We're also in charge of making sure everybody's parked in the right place and there's no parking violations. We have three blood drops a year. Students now have the chance to get birthday and CPR certified. All class changes are interned within our building. We have a walk control inside, like inside the school, and our new disc golf course has really been a big success. The students, like, who are not normally active in extracurricular activities have really come to like this new program, and they're really involved, and I'm really surprised on how it's all working out. They're really excited about this. And talking about what works, we did, we're conducting hallway sweeps now, so no kids are lingering out in the hallways during class time. It's caught down, it's cut down on the tardiness a lot. And then, another program we're starting in National Honor Society is Buddy Program. Okay, so, students who are at risk of dropping out, that, you know, they're having a hard time through high school, the transition from middle to, to high school, we're looking, it's really concentrated on sophomore impression kids, because sometimes a transition can be really hard. We're just giving them a role model so they can look up to us, and like, that'll cut down on people who drop out. Okay? We offer credit recovery to give students a second chance to receive that credit that they're, that they failed to give, and we're very proud to announce that we have a new student swap on it. Okay? And that can be taken away if, if we don't exceed his expectations.
Which is what?
Always.
How much difference?
Oh, we have, we have, yeah. Uh, we've also taught test course eligibility for AP and honors classes, which I think has helped a lot. I could tell a big difference from last year during testing. In order to be eligible for the AP and honor classes, you have to try and like work hard on your tests, instead of just flying by. Some kids say it don't count, but I'm going to try. But there's, I mean, it really helped a lot last year, I saw a lot of kids try. And last, let me talk about how we have noticed a big increase in the food quality. It's something at our high school, we have four choices each day. That's a lot, and a lot of schools around here don't have that many choices. We have pizza every day, we have salad, garlic, saffron, fruits and vegetables, all of them come, and, and it's really gone up this year.
Um, so, major concerns that I should be, is a lot of sports facilities, like, you know, football stadium, soccer, baseball, softball. I feel like there's always room for improvement. And the time assessments and the disconnect between tests that we are taking in the classroom compared to the ACT and SAT, um, for myself and Ryan, I'm sure that we can vouch that the first time test that I have ever taken was the ACT, and that was last year. So, and what are we doing to attract qualified teachers? I think that a lot is a big concern for us.
Would that be breakfast before we start here? Our facility needs, we feel like there were upgrades, we're almost embarrassed to even ask for stuff, but also to give, there's so many other larger needs out in the county, but for some facility needs, those are just things that we look at, and we just get to upgrade.
Let me ask you one question, if Snyder on that. Our, these facility needs, do you put those into school duty system?
Some, I think we do, some we don't, because again, you look at most of our upgrades, and I'm sure you ask for repair. If something's seven, eight years old, you'd like to upgrade it, I'm not sure that you would need to come and repair that.
Well, I would just suggest you do that for this reason, that Mr. Gosny's office, you know, he looks at the county as a whole, and he has to prioritize his work and his workers. And I think if everyone were to put their school duty, uh, on school duty, put all the needs that they have, then that allows him to look at things on a countywide basis and kind of prioritize his work and relationship to everybody else, realizing that something could happen tomorrow morning when you go into school, and that's going to, you know, will take preference. But I think that would just help, if all schools would do that, it would help him in his plan. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Um, like Mr. Snyder said, I think a lot of our facility needs, of course, upgrades. I personally don't see many things wrong in our school, and that's all about it. Um, just simple things such as updated lighting equipment, and visitor, and substitute parking spots, that's kind of frustration for teachers when they're designated parking spot, and they can't get in that parking spot because of substitute, because they're not aware that that parking spot was taken. Um, another big thing was, our distribution, our school, we can distribute videos that we take from the center, along with like a plan supplies, uh, throughout the tri-state area, but we can't take it from the auditorium into the school, and we can't take it only within the school. Um, along with that athletic facility, the ball field, um, the stair treads on stairwells, the rubber part, which is coming off, and I think the concern is that it's just a duct tape, which is, and a double door being added at the top of the main stairwell, it's kind of confusing because of the bottom, there's a double, double door there, but when you go upstairs to the second floor, there's only one stairwell, so it causes some traffic in the process.
Any questions? Okay, on your board.
On your facility needs, Liz, do you have copier, copier maintenance supplies? Isn't there a contract with a copier service to provide those needs?
There is, and that's coming. I think at one time, there was a discussion for that, and then made a change, and we understand that that's coming.
Was it just this week?
Yes, yes, this week.
You're answering the question, the answer is yes.
We know the number of copiers that are coming to take care of, I think that was our operation.
Who's next?
I have a couple for the student, or one for the students, if nobody has any questions related to the presentation.
If you just go for the, you don't chime in.
Since you two are the sacrificial innypigs to come here tonight, I'll put you on the spot. Um, how do you all, and you can answer individually, you first, Messina, since I'm used to hearing your loud mouth on the soccer field. How do you each individually feel about our new drug policy that we require of driving students, athletic students, and activity students?
I personally feel like it is a great program, because I see students my age, because I'm underclassing, who play sports, start in school, what have you, and I know what they're doing on the weekends, I know what they're doing throughout the week, and I just feel like it's kind of, kind of an inconvenience for myself and other students who I connect with. You know, we don't, I don't partake in things that way, and if you do, then that's your business, but I feel like you shouldn't be allowed to do the things that other students are doing that aren't doing those things. And I feel that, I mean, if you're doing that in your, you know, free time, and you go out to the real world, I mean, you're just going to do the same thing, and it's just, it's just planning for inevitable.
Messina, let me ask, let me ask you a question then, Messina, I'll drive it home. Say, how would you feel, well, you are having a wonderful soccer season this year, aren't you? Speak up verbally. And you just shook your head, we were in conversation.
Sorry.
That's, that's all right. How would you feel if two or three of your soccer teammates that were critical of the team failed their drug test and were not able to play?
I would be curious. I would be very upset, because at the beginning of soccer season, we had myself and five other captains had a meeting, and we all vowed that we would not be partake in those things, not only during soccer season, but the whole entire school year as a whole, because there's just, I, in my opinion, and their opinions, there's just no good that comes of it, and, you know, I would hate it if myself or any other senior made a stupid mistake and did that, but they chose to do that, so they have to deal with the consequences. So, I would not defend them, it's their decision, and if their decision says they choose the consequences.
Mr. Miller, do you feel like the program has cut down on alcohol or drug use among students?
Uh, just last week, I saw a kid, we just did our first round of drug testing, and I saw a kid a few days before that, he was rolling around at the floor, and he was dealt with, I mean, he was dealt with, okay, and he was popping pills, okay, and then I think it's a lot of, and it's a painkiller. Uh, but I was like, oh, he's going to be in some real trouble when we did drug testing. And it was, I mean, he came out and he, he was, I mean, he tested positive. So, it kind of makes them realize that, hey, they're really testing for this stuff, and it's time to get serious, because, I mean, they're usually just blown by, and they don't really care, they're like, it will never come around, just say it, and I think that it's a great thing, I mean, I really do.
I think it's a great program to prepare students like us and everyone else that the real world will not stand for things like that, and, I mean, next year, myself and Ryan, we're going to college, we're going out to the workforce, and I think that it just kind of opens up students' eyes.
Well, you, you said you'd be curious, but you're not curious at the drug policy, you're curious at your teammates.
Yes, if they choose, if they choose to be involved with, you know, alcohol and those like that, that is their decision. I would be very disappointed in them, that they chose to do that, and they would have to live with the consequences, you know, not being able to play in the games, and not being able to, you know, that's a good idea. I think the program is a great.
Thank you, bud.
Ryan, we appreciate you all. I don't know whether you were sacrificial lamb or not.
Volunteer.
Volunteer, okay. We may have, we may have. Okay, just a couple, maybe Mr. Snyder or someone. Uh, on here under math, it says looking to obtain funding to continue after-school tutoring. What is looking?
Well, last year, we had a, Mr. Lempel found us the money we needed to tutor at the school, and I understand that that's not, may not be available this year.
So, President, we aren't doing that.
As we know, we are in the process. We don't want to throw that.
We have limited Title V money, Mr. Griesley, that we may not be able to do it all year, but I've been looking at that, and, uh, we, it may be, we may have to start it later, but, or end it earlier, but there will be some after-school offerings named.
Would that be, uh, just in math, or, you know?
That'd be, that'd be a school decision.
Whether the need might be.
We do have money for transportation in another grant that we didn't spend all of last year.
Mr. Snyder, if there's lots of money, you can.
We're going to blend it. We've been in conversation, we'll blend some funds. It may not be as long as we had last year, because our pot is not as deep.
We offered tutoring at all four content areas last year.
We started second semester, I believe, didn't we?
We did, second semester, yes.
Um, on both of the, on the math and reading language arts both, we show increases that are stated here. Are these just for that particular class, these percentages? Or wheels, and I guess, when we find out here in a couple of months, it's the overall?
I think we also get our bargain, I think, here in October.
We think. We'll wait.
We embargoed. We will. We talked about it all the time, it seemed like we're trying to get a new bargain out of this refreshment, and the school is going this direction, number's going that direction, we hope we have the same bargain here next year.
Um, in the same vein, I should have mentioned here, under major concerns, time assessment, but there's a, I have some assessment and time assessment.
Some assessments are not timed, so there's a little time, and they can work until they're finished, and whether they're saying the majority of the tests that they take are not timed, like the ACT.
What's the solution to this?
I guess that's called a time test. This, we could probably do in the house, because initially, if you remember the, the old state testing was a time test.
Right.
So, that was, that was the way they would give that, that time piece of, kind of practice.
And now, they, the tests they take are or are not?
Are not timed.
But.
They recommend a time, if you're a good time.
But if you put a time limit on those tests, won't that ultimately bring the test scores overall down, and that's the data we're looking at, it's how we improve, right? So, why not add a, a level of testing, or, or optional testing that is timed, just as practice? Because I don't want to see, I don't want to see our numbers go down. I mean, I, I, believe me, you're going to get your fill of time tests starting next year for the next X number of years that you're in school, but I, I think it's a great time, time, and a great idea to practice it, but not at the cost of bringing the, the gains we're seeing in our academics down.
We're thinking of possibly if you're using the ASVAB test, I don't know if they can or cannot, and that's a discussion we have with the youth, if that's something we possibly do, maybe have a couple of the ASVAB tests.
All ACTs.
ACTs, SATs. I don't know, I don't know whether it was at this school conference last week, or recent this week, that there was a discussion that there wasn't really an incentive for many seniors to take seriously the test. I mean, some will because they, you know, are that way, but for others, there really isn't incentive, it doesn't have any effect to grade in any way. Which one was it?
That was, that's right, that's, I guess the state board is now looking at what can be done for teach, or students to have some accountability on the assessment.
That's awesome.
So, what, I don't remember the statistics on, or the exact numbers, but saying there was 240 minutes to take, maybe this was a recent, or it was a recent, 240 minutes was allowed for this, and our students in West Virginia were finishing this on the average in 120 minutes. So, you know, what that says is many were just filling out the blanks and wanting, because it didn't mean anything to them.
It's called Christmas trees, we're on Christmas trees sometimes.
We used to just pick B or C or something. On the parking regulations, now, right now, how are, how is parking, is there a student area, or teacher areas, or some areas?
There's a senior area, junior area.
Oh, is it by class?
Yes, by class, and actually, our, he was talking about what our safety, folks, you can actually go in and monitor, make sure folks are in their parking spot, now, they don't harass or encounter anybody, all you do is write down license numbers and stick the number of the spot to the rim, that way they bring it back to us, and we obviously make that determination, whether or not there's to be a parking violation.
Does Ryan give them a ticket or anything?
No, we don't give them tickets.
Don't blame that one, I thought maybe part of your law enforcement class said that, get some hands on it.
They would want those low hands.
Just on the facility, we realize there are many things there, just a comment about the football field. We have, as many of you know, funding a football stadium, we've got different numbers. It ranges anywhere from probably three to five million dollars to have a complete astroturf field with bleachers and the whole nine yards. And, you know, we've thus way out of our way. You may recall, a couple of years ago, we had a school bond that would have done that, had it passed along with some things in the other part of the county, but it just was, it had dismal results, so we kind of got the message, that wasn't gonna work. The only funds we really have available are 200, it's $200,000. The county commission challenged the Board of Education with a hundred dollars, a $100,000 grant, or not grant, an amount of money. And then the board at that time matched that, so those two, that $200,000 is really the only monies we have towards a football field. Now, you know, we'll have some people that will say, well, you ought to utilize that money at the Lions Club field and try to upgrade it. And, oh, well, we feel, one, that we really, that may not be an option for us, because this money and the challenge was all geared towards having a field at the high school, right beside the, on campus, which many are, speaking for myself, I do not like to see one of these, I hope I see it. And so that would be one thing, the other is, you know, why isn't everything geared towards the Lions Club field? Well, if you've lived around here very long, you've seen every inch of that Lions Club field underwater at one time. If you don't believe me, Mr. Curry will tell you all about it, because I know he has. But anyway, we've tried, we've put out bids in a couple of different ways to build, we thought, we have to take it in steps. So what we wanted to do was to get the, where the location where the football field hopefully will be one of these days, to get it at proper elevation, so, you know, we had architects, they did that, we have all those specifications. So we put one out, where that would be, all that would be graded to the proper level, and we had drainage included as a part of that, because there had to be drainage on it, and a crowns field, and I forget whatever, might have been. But anyway, the, we got that bid, and our, we had one bid, it was for $499,000. Once again, we got two, so, you know, you don't even have to do well math to figure that one out. So we went back to the drawing board, what is feasible then? So about a month ago, we went with what we considered pretty much a bare bones thing, is we were gonna, once again, until we get that field elevated to the proper level, nothing else could happen. So we attempted to do that, and we were a little bit shocked, once again. We did, we had one bid that would be under about $200,000 marker, but the board chose not to accept that bid. So, and that was to crown the field and have it sown in grass. At this time, and we've got a couple of more months to think about this, but we're looking at come February, March, somewhere in that neighborhood, that once again, we'll put that out the bid. This time, we may just narrow that down to the basic bid being the elevation of the feet. And if you're ever done any of those construction things, you can always put alternates, which are add-ons, I'd say. And we may put add-ons on there, such as seeding the field, hydro seeding the field, as been mentioned. We may add drainage as a, as a add-on, as an alternate, but the basic thing of getting the leveling of the field done. Which we are optimistic we could get that part done. If we were able to do that, within the confines of what money we have, then we could move forward, and we've kicked around different ideas. If we were able to do that, not, and not, and including even, going back to Mr. Gosd, he's done such a good job so far, that, that we might be able to utilize him, and maybe his men probably not during the work day, but we might use them and pay them overtime or something on the weekends, that maybe they install the drainage, it's necessarily. We've got all the specs for all of these things, but it's just a matter of being able to do it within the amount of monies we have. So we're gonna look at that again come springtime, it would be a good time as far as grass growing and all that. And I know Mr. Whuperson's our seeding expert, you know, him being in that business he's in. So, but we all think if we got our, if we're able to do that then, and then if we had hydro seed the field ourselves, or had that done maybe locally, we could get that part done. And once again, we're, we're working towards that, but, you know, like a lot of things, it's on, you gotta do it what your budget allows. So it's not that we've forgotten that certain, something we'd like to see happen, and we'll keep working towards that. Okay, anybody have anything else, Mr. Curry? No, Mr. Vick, anything you have?
No questions, nice job on the presentation.
I'd just like to, yes, Ms. Mitt.
I would like to say something, Dana, you brought up something about the new grading system for the schools. I think hopefully, when we do our LSIC presentation, with parents being present, that it might be a good time to kind of explain this to them, so that when this new grading system comes out, people aren't shocked when they see, like, this school is graded A, D, or this school is graded C. It's my understanding that Ohio is already doing this, and almost all of them are graded an F. So rather than being shocked if you get word that our school is graded an F, I think if we explain the grading system.
It looks like, Mr. Vick, I think right now, the state board is still trying to arm that thing up.
I hope they draw.
They're tweaking, revising, but I, I, you know, I can say this, you know, the grades will be dispersed on a, or distributed on a bell curve, which means that 65% of the schools in the state of West Virginia are gonna be C schools. And then you'll have a small amount of B and D schools, and an even smaller number of As and Fs. So this first few years out of the gate, it's gonna be somewhat controlled by the state board, in how many schools out there are actually gonna be F schools. I've been given a number, an estimate, that it'll be somewhere between 20 to 25 schools at most. That would be an F school. And the same number, you know, 20 to 25, it would be the, an A school. But in terms of the information that would go out to teachers, administrators, parents, the public, we're still waiting for the state department to give us that guidance. So as Mr. Priestley said, they're still trying to revise and tweak some things before they go public with the information. But once we have it, you know, there will be a reliance with parents to let them know when all this is gonna be.
I just didn't want people to be shocked, like our schools are failing, when actually they aren't. I think we have really good teachers and really good schools.
I agree with Ms. Mitt, I think our goal when that time comes will be to make sure everybody understands the basis of these grades. Because this is, once again, the state board, I know, the other day we heard, even they're, they're still, there's a couple of things they haven't decided yet. So they do that, then how the grading's gonna work, and I agree with Harold, if you can share that, what they decide, and we know, and we go ahead.
How you want it, John?
Hey, listen, and from, from media's point of view, I would hope you would trust me. I will focus on the positive, like I try to, rather than things, because I'm not gonna hide it, but I mean, it could be with a positive spin, like I've always tried to look for. So that's from the newspaper's perspective, I can't speak for television, though, that's what we're trying to do, the slide right there.
There'll be what's called a soft release, it'll be an opportunity for school districts to get the information, look, to make sure that it's accurate, before anything is released publicly. What we're being told right now, that there won't be anything officially released until, I'll give you the 10th. So that's, that seems to be the date that's been drawn in the same. We'll know ahead, we'll know before, but we also have an opportunity to verify the date of it.
Okay, no one has anything else? I'd just like to thank Mr. Snyder and all your staff, I want to thank all the members of the LSIC at the high school. I know that's another thing that you have to deal with, especially parents that don't have to come to school at all, that they certainly are welcome and need them, but I have the faculty members that are part of that, to take out of their workday and come to things like this. And I'm sure the things you have to do in school, that, you know, you're not required to do, but I commend you on doing those things, I appreciate that. And keep up the good work, Mr. Snyder, and we'll, we'll be kind of watching you. Thank you, thank you all. We'll let them decide if they want to stay, they're certainly welcome to, if they wish to leave, we understand. We'll start our next presentation. Haven is getting ready, long day. Time to go home, Mark. Okay, we, our next, we have a presentation, our LSIC presentation from Amy with PKA, Ms. Whuperson.
First, I want to say, I have a great neighbor in Skyler.
Is that one up right there?
That's mine, yeah. Anyways, do you want to go around and just take a look? I'm Leah Hager.
Hi, I'm Lou Stine from Holme.
Harold, I do have a favor to ask.
Mr. Terry, I cook.
Gloria, I'm in the second grade.
Paula Doos, Special Education, Business and Finance.
Randy Shaw, Social Studies in the Middle School and Virgils Commission.
And I do want to say, though, the chili was made by our Holme class, and they actually won the cook-off at the, I don't know. At the Chili Fest, the second year in a row. That's that good chili recipe. And I also want to say that all of the decorations that are around, our business partner, Paula Agnes, she's a peanut. Paula's Blue Room, I guess I should call it that, anyways, right down here on the corner, she's open that, and she will be our business partner. She came out and decorated, and of course, all these things are for sale. Except for the little bouquet over here, I made that, and I'm glad it's quite good, it's Paula.
It's still for sale, I mean, it's right price.
It could be for sale, of course. Okay, I'm gonna tell you all what I do to the kids, we have to keep an eye on the dogs, so. She'll be fine, she doesn't need anything. All right, here is, I love this picture.
What is it?
Our Mr. Mayner took the drone up, and she took this picture last spring, so I'll just use that. We put on here our assessment results. We had in English, London Darts, a 6.7, which did increase proficiency, and mathematics, a 2.8. In preparing, we are, that's our, one of our mission statements, that preparing today is urgent, preparing tomorrow's leaders today. A program that we have went to some training on this summer, a couple of, I would say, Mr. King, was Leader in Me. And it's something that our school feels very strongly about doing. Right now, we, we're doing a book study for it, and if you went into any of our hallways or anything, you'll see lots of bright colors. That's part of it, to just liven things up, and so we've started that type of thing. We started with leadership, just different leadership things with our kids. So we're hoping that we will be able to have that training, we'll find some money some way to have the training for our staff, so that we can carry out the Leader in Me, which we think that's very important with our kids. So some of the things that we started doing, or we're going to do, student leadership teams in fifth through eighth grades, we won't hear a little bit more about that from the children here. We also definitely want strong boys throughout our school, even in the younger grades. Student that conferencing with parents, and that will happen each nine weeks. And we'll be doing, starting out in fifth through the eighth grades, it might take like an afternoon or a morning, and those students will have to conference, their parents will be invited, they will have to conference on all their own data, like behavior data, assessment data, their grades, attendance, all of the things, but they will have to be talking about themselves. And in order to get our children there, we are practicing, so they will be practicing in English class, which will be a part of their speaking grade, and part of their curriculum there. They'll be given just a set of, you know, false data to talk about. If a parent can't come, then we'll have some teachers from the elementary side come, we may ask one of you all to come, and, you know, just sit down and just talk with them about where they're at. We hope that that will encourage them to stay on the right track, if they're gonna have to talk about their own things that they're doing in school. We started this year too, something that was very exciting, some, it was a little difficult at first, getting it all together, but we started coming together in the morning in our gym, so all our drop-offs are in the middle school gym. And we do a whole school meeting, morning meeting, we do all our announcements there, we do celebrations there, whether it be birthdays or classroom celebrations. We do the pledge together, we have students that are now leading that, in those days. I will tell you that it is the first time that I have felt like we're one school. Because, you know, I, we may do the announcements on the inner prom, or, you know, students might come in and do the pledge on the inner prom, but it was, I could never see their faces, I never saw the ele, I never saw the kids, not the way I wanted to. Because my office is in the middle school, and it's a separate building, and then you're here with this office, and, you know, we both have our own set of discipline issues, and parents that come in, so it's almost like two schools. But to be able to be there for 30 minutes in the morning, and walk around, and see all the children, it's, it's the first time I felt like it's a, it's one school. Haven is able just to walk around, she meets and greets the kids every morning too, so.
And, I mean, it's, it's causing even elementary students to step up and take the leadership role. I had a third grader approach me this week and said, could we sit down and talk, because I have some ideas of some things we could do in school that I think the kids would really like. And I said, sure, you know, come in, we'll sit down and talk about it, and we'll see what we can do. So the children are excited about taking those roles too.
And they really, you know, I had parents come and tell me, my kid wants to, my child wants to come to school on time now, because you're doing this thing, you know, up here in the gym. So we've ordered some other things, like some attendance, monthly attendance things that they'll have, to put on bill, keychains, and just different stuff to, to celebrate. We want to celebrate every night that we do. We also, of course, continue our grade level vertical power with teaming. We are wanting to get stronger with our data walls and our data information. Our plan was this year to have a classroom that we could use just for teacher conferencing and a data wall where children were in there, would see it, we could have the actual children, because it will help me and Ms. Hoover, if, if I could go in and see a child's face, and where they're at. So then when I walk into a classroom, you know, I'm like questioning who is where, I know, I see the faces, and I'll know where they're at. So we're working on that, we kind of had to move our, juggle our rooms around, we may have one space, we'll have to do that. If not, I have a portable data flip chart wall that I'll have every grade level in there, so. Lots of our classes use interactive notebooks, our teachers and our students for us this year, they're, we're working on it, in the middle school, we're gonna, we're working towards getting what we're gonna use, but personal goals and academic goals. And they'll look at those each nine weeks to see where they're at, and what they need to change in their goal. Personal goals, I asked, I asked all of my staff to, they took a, an index card at the beginning of the year, and I asked them to write down several things, but one of them was a personal goal, just something you want to be able to do. It doesn't have to be anything to do with school, and lots of it wasn't. I mean, my personal goal, might sound silly, I've always wanted to put basketball on one of those rips over there at the gym, I can't do that. So the middle school boys are gonna have to help me meet my goal, aren't you, during basketball season? So I told them it doesn't have to be academic, if you just go in. So, I told them it doesn't have to be, um, academic, if it's just whatever, something you want to, you want to do. Um, and then, the other things, I'm not going to read them all, but the SRI, the SMI, the DIBLs, and our progress monitoring, those are all things that the children will be looking at in their data, and, you know, forming their goals around, and maybe have to talk about.
Um, a little bit about academics, some of the programs that we use at school, uh, learning three sixty framework, um, we utilize the I, I read program, and we've done that now for several years, and it's been very successful for us for kindergarten through second grade. Um, system forty-four, and read one eighty for special education subgroups, and that's through fifth through eighth grade. Um, total one, uh, reading focus, we do the celebration as well. Um, a big thing we're doing this year, again, are our career awareness classes, although this year, instead of it just being seventh and eighth grade, we have added fifth and sixth as well. So, we were able to expand that to Lego Robotics, um, an engineering, uh, coding class in our fifth grade, and then our classes that we had last year, we were able to schedule so that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade could do a rotation, um, within those, those other classes.
And actually, I was going to throw in, they, um, our, our students have to report on that, that is in our standards, and, um, so as they go through these, this is a part of their portfolio, they put a little certificate, like they're in automotive, or agriculture, they'll have that to stick in their portfolio, too, if they want to do that class.
And our, our dog, Haven, we love her, and she has really, um, she's been a great asset to our school. Um, I have had, it's been a tough transition for, um, some of our kindergarteners this year, coming from preschool, you know, it's to a whole different building, a whole different environment. And we've had some difficult situations, that she's actually been able to work with those students, um, and they, they're progressing, cutting down on discipline. She is, the kids are convinced that she can tell if they're lying or not. And we did that, I have to admit, we kind of put that in there, but she can't, she can, um, tell if someone comes in the room in their tent, or, we had a parent come in, that was confrontational, and, and the two of us were in there, and she couldn't, he sat just across from me, and she, hey, got in between us.
Several times.
So, she, she really has been, and the kids love her, um, and she's been a great thing for our school. Um, you want to go?
Now, I do want to say that we may send you an invitation, her birthday's coming up, so one morning during our morning meeting, we're going to have a little birthday party, but Haven wants all of her birthday presents to go to the local animal shelter, so if you want to contribute anything, we'll be, we'll, we'll, kind of like a community project, of course, so, um, we're going to have, maybe, some little bone-shaped cookies, some cookies, but, um, healthy ones.
Healthy ones.
I have carrots in them or something.
We're still doing APY, monitoring instruction, I don't, I don't think we have, we have our first.
We have our next, next week.
Um, project-based learning, and utilizing, uh, various technology programs, that's a big thing. We have a lot of teachers who embrace technology, and they, they use some of this stuff against to draw them in, and support achievement, increase achievement. Wellness, um, we have movement activities in the classroom, um, martial nutrition comes, and they work with a couple different grade levels, uh, to teach them about fruits and vegetables, and give them taste tests and things of that nature. Our children are learning how to plant and harvest their own vegetables, and, you know, they cook them, consume them, that's been a great thing. Uh, we have drug prevention program with probation office, they're actually going to be coming this month, um, with their drug dogs, to talk to the children about drug prevention. Uh, we just received another grant through Highmark for five thousand dollars, to install a greenhouse, um, out in our garden area. And, uh, we have some students who are going to be attending the Fed Up Conference in Charleston, and they are going to learn nutritional leadership. Um, Fed Up was a movie that was put out by several organizations, Keys for Healthy Kids, CAMC, Alliance for a Healthier Generation, um, but it teaches, um, the sugar content in food, and, and what foods are better to eat, and rather than those that are high in sugar content. So, hopefully, those students will come back, and they'll be able to teach us some good stuff about healthier eating habits.
Um, for safety, of course, now, I think that, too, with our morning meetings, I feel more safe with our kids, because I know where they're at, they're not all coming into different areas, they're all coming into the gym, and, um, we're in there together. Um, we, again, are going to have the, need the second round of the Alice training, and, um, actually, we asked last year for them to come in and do some walk drills with us, and we really need them to do that. Um, which we plan, and planning and practice lockdowns, escape and fire drills, um, the flashing lights that you will help us get installed out here, of course, for safety, um, use work cameras, lock doors, parents waiting outside, with their children, um, all that staff, you know, on the street doing the duties, of course, cyber safety and all that. And I do want to say about our fire marshal, um, walk through, you know, what was good last year, but, um, I was just, I, I went home, and I was just like, how in the world, you know, do you keep up with all this as principals, really, are you, you know, you've got everything? So, I, um, I was driving to work Friday morning, and I thought, you know what, you've got these career awareness classes going on. One of those classes, those kids, if you make up a checklist of things you know, you know they're not supposed to be, and you ask for help from, you know, people that do know, let those kids go around once or twice a month, and check the rooms, and just say, is the exit locked? It, you know, just let them, if it is in this room, they don't have to say anything to anyone, they just bring it back to us, we go in it, take care of it. So, that way, it helps me monitor, us monitor, but it gives our kids a leadership role also, so. Glad to talk with our guys, so, anyway, that takes a little bit off.
Um, the third grader also told me that they had to take their popcorn off of their door because the fire, it was against the fire marshal's, um, rules, so.
And I do want to say up there in the corner, that one, um, that is actually one of the fourth grade's, it's, it's, they have on their wall, outside their door, and that, it says, "We, the fourth grade family, choose to be respectful, helpful, and responsible leaders. We will have the school every day focused and ready to learn. We promise to work as a team." And, um, this is, we feel that our kids, of course, were born to be leaders, and with the beginning of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, our staff has begun the process of transforming our students into becoming the leaders they were meant to be. We know it will be a long and winding road, but it is one we choose to take, because our community needs it, and our students deserve it. Watch them lead, it's going to be exciting. So, um, we hope that we can move forward with our Leader in Me training, and, and, so, um...
Everybody in our school is really embracing the idea.
They're embracing, and they're ready.
And they're excited, and I think it's a, a step in the right direction, so.
So, um, that is all that happened, I hear, well, Mr. Bell's most space, um, your kids will, or, do you want the kids to go before that?
Yeah.
Let's let the kids go first.
All Ms. Hoover's giving that recognition, like, like, go ahead and introduce Ms. Bell.
Hi, I'm Carter Honey, I'm the National Union's Art Society President, and, uh, students of the Royal Spanish School.
I'm Caitlin, I think, and I'm the National Union Society Master, and I'm, yes, thank you.
And they're both soccer players, and they didn't have practice nights, so they were able to join us, and our other two are softball players, so they had to leave a little early to get to practice.
In middle school, there are four houses, based off the Harry Potter series, the Griffins, the Dragons, the Kelpies, and there are three teachers per house, there's a head boy and head girl. And there are four ambassadors throughout the house.
The house, to our points, the houses have tournaments, academic, and individual sessions. The spelling bees, the field day, the riding boat, the, the, the grades of the day.
We all do it, and we all play about, like, the house competitions, all around, I think.
Um, well, we, on Fridays, we've had relay races, uh, poster competitions, and there will be more in the future. To lose these house contests, um, it's supposed to be like a lot of getting attention, plastic area, there are six peas that you need to follow, not disappoints, if you disobey the six peas, you're smart, or, you're... Um, this is one of the four houses, Venus, the three main teachers are, so, Mr. Meadows, Aaron, Van, and, 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 Paulie, I'm sorry, the head boy of Venus, Bryce, and, and, and those girls, and...
For Dragons, the teachers are, Miss Maynor, the English teacher, Mr. Maynor, the yard teacher, and Mr. Berz, the head boy is John, the yard teacher, and the head girl is...
The, the teachers are, this, the, uh, just, uh, this is, this is, this is, uh, this is Purdy, who teaches the, the, and, and, uh, the head girl, uh, the yard teacher, and the boys, just, uh...
For Griffin, the teachers are Miss Maynor, uh, Mr. Bell, Matt, and Miss Maynor, the gym, the head boy is Joey Howard, and the head girl is Lucy Davis.
And the head, girl, and boy, that is, um, after, on the leadership team, that meets with administration, and then they have, they'll go back to their houses and have conversations with what we do, as, as that communication back and forth.
What grades are the houses consist of?
Six, seven, eight.
We've also used that, um, we, obviously, we've only been school a month, and the first few weeks, we did on Fridays, during the CTE time, at the end of the day, we've done our competitions, like they said, relays, and different activities, and they compete as a team, uh, to do things. But then, last week, we also, um, handed out pre-progress reports, and conferences with the students within their houses. Um, we actually split them up, boys and girls, and, um, met with them, talked about their tennis, talked about their missing word, um, encouraged them, and they're accountable to one another, it's not just, um, an individual thing, it's a team thing, but it's also an accountability thing. Positive peer pressure goes a long way, especially with students of this age, and, um, we've seen a lot of improvement, they don't want to get in trouble, because they don't want to be the reason that their house loses their game. And, um, the other kids don't want to see it either, so they, they're like, here's your pencil, you need a pencil, here's a pencil, like, you know, don't forget your homework, and you see them in the hallway, kind of encouraging each other, and we talked about positive peer pressure, it's not supposed to be, you know, you need to get it done, it's, you're part of the team, and what you do matters. So, I think that that's really, uh, important for these kids to hear, is what they do, what they do matters, how they act matters, and not just to them, but for their group, so.
Thank you all, thank you. And now, I'll have, uh, Mr. Bell with our facility needs.
I think you guys have already...
Harold is actually going to give us this.
Well, I'm kind of hung in between the electronic age and...
Well, you know, that's the, he's going to tell you, but, right?
I think we may have already done it.
Becky, she's got the gym standing, she's not...
We did, and actually, one of them was, and I wasn't aware that it was the gravel was, um, delivered, but he's going to speak to that, um, this summer.
It just helps us for the life, I know, but, you know, once again, he, then, as things are done, he takes them off, it just helps everybody.
Yeah, but they, they work.
Okay, Mr. Bell.
Well, you know, as always, uh, like somebody said earlier, we could, we could probably go on forever with a list of needs for schools, and never, never accomplish anything except get a list made, because it's endless. Uh, but we just decided to concentrate on a few that we feel are really vital to the beginning of the school year, and are important to the health and safety of the kids and the staff. You know, if you have a quality environment for kids, then, then you're more apt to get quality learning taking place, too. The first issue that we talked about as a school was the air quality issues. Think over the summer, there were some water issues in a couple of rooms downstairs, one in particular, the art room, uh, which resulted in a lot of mold accumulated in that room. Uh, the problem with mold is, it's not always on surfaces that you can see, you know, I know Mr. Maynor threw out tons of materials, that, and paper product, mold kind of penetrates it, you can't wipe it off and still use it, it, it's, it's there, and you have to get rid of it, and that's an expensive situation to have to deal with. In addition to that, you've got, uh, surfaces that aren't visible, behind shelves, under shelves, you know, behind cabinets, even possibly in the ceiling tiles, and there's concern that in that room, and possibly even in other rooms, that mold spores may have spread throughout the basement area, and are, could potentially be a health hazard, and maybe has been so far, because we've had a couple of people pretty sick that have worked out in that area this year. So, that's a big concern, and, uh, you know, they're requesting, if possible, to get an air quality test come in, and, you know, I know EPA was in the building, at least on the premises, a few days ago, I'm not sure to what extent they, or for what reasons they were there, uh, but we feel it's important to our kids and our staff, you know? Nobody needs health issues, especially with the rising cost of healthcare, and, you know, with, uh, attendance being an issue and a concern priority for everybody, we want that, so, that's our number one concern. Uh, next is, one of the very first things I noticed whenever I came to Hamlin, and by the way, I'm tickled to have to be back home, I consider Hamlin my home school, it's, uh, my second, third year, uh, teaching, I came to Hamlin for five years in elementary, and then was taken out with consolidation, took eighteen years to get back, but I'm glad to be back. Uh, but one of the first things I noticed was, our bathrooms are in pretty dire need of repair. Uh, the boys' bathroom in the middle school downstairs, the towel in front of the urinals is horrible. Uh, from what I understand, my nose doesn't work, but from everybody that works over here, they say the boys' bathroom in the downstairs on the, in the elementary side, has a horrible odor in the afternoons, uh, I think it's needing some attention just from general sealing, uh, of the floors. We still have the old tiles in the boys' bathroom in our building over there, and looks like the wax and finish is off of it, it just looks horrible. And, of course, you know, uh, teenage, even from primary grades all the way up, boys are not the most sanitary people in the world, and if they urinate in the floor, it gets between the tiles and stays in the floor, even though custodians mop, bleach does not kill everything, it doesn't get down under there and kill all that smell and the germs that are there. So, that's a major concern. Also, along with the lines of air conditioning, and I know Greg's tired of hearing this, because it's been nonstop with him all year, um, we have some units upstairs, at least two that I know of, uh, that are leaking into the downstairs ceilings, one of them's leaking right down into Ms. Lucas's office. So, if we have that leak taking place, we can't see what it's doing above the ceiling tile, because, you know, we're not there, but if it's there, and it's resting for a period of time, that's going to create additional mold issues, uh, which leads to additional health issues, and we'd like to see that addressed. Um, the gravel in the driveway... Um, the gravel in the driveway, um, I wasn't aware, but now that I think back, I do remember there was some gravel down, because I paid attention all the time driving back and forth by the school, I know there was gravel, but on through the summer. But it's still, we have an elevation out there of probably three to five inches from the gravel level up to the asphalt that people are parking on. Now, my first time coming to the school and parking, the driveway was just a little bit damp, and I had brand new tires on my truck. When I went to back up, I almost slid into the tree out there, so, you know, if, if that can happen with one car on a parking lot, imagine what it's going to be with several cars parked down there, having to get in a tight parking space. Uh, so that just prevents unnecessary accidents from happening, if we, even if we can just get a ramp, you know, to alleviate some of that elevation from the gravel to the, uh, asphalt, to make it easier to make that transition. We've got a pretty good base there, but either we need more gravel spread to raise that elevation up, or some type of ramping surface, additional asphalt or concrete, maybe that's one to withstand some time, and not have to be done over again. Uh, to provide a general transition up over that, you don't have to accelerate so much to get up there. And, uh, you know, those are just our primary concerns, like I said, we could have gone on and on, but we decided to concentrate on the things that could be most immediately addressed, and hopefully the least painless. Air conditioning, I think, is going to be a pain for all of us all year. Anytime we have these centralized units, I think that's going to be, uh, you know, when air control is from somewhere else, you're going to have issues with it, and we understand that. And we appreciate everything for what it has done, and, you know, I know it's, it's tough on you guys too, so, but that's our concern, thank you.
We've got to incur that safety is our primary responsibility.
I'd like to address a couple of issues here.
Okay.
One of the issues were, when we officially run into the mold issue in the art room, the outside drain, uh, had rubber coming in fourteen feet and the building has collapsed. So what I've done is I had an awning foot out there to cover the emergency exit, to stop the rain from coming in down. If we want to hit the hood, what's happening, but we get a heavy rain, and instead of the rain draining properly, it would just go straight into the rain, spill the hell out of the water. We took care of that issue, the awning, I believe, was done, uh, with the four last two weeks, uh, awning has been completed, we're waiting on a list to get the awning done. We've had that done, uh, the restroom floors, uh, on every restroom floor outside of Charlotte, that's, we've just done dual, uh, the summer, we've done some of West Hamlin, different places. Biggest problem with here at Hamlin is the asbestos, asbestos tile cannot be messed with until we have an abatement. We have to have an asbestos abatement, it has to be removed, we have to get pricing on that, uh, to remove the tile. Some of that tile in the floor is actually, there's actually two layers of tile on that, you know, with all that, so. We're, I'm in the process of trying to, uh, look at getting the abatement, pricing, uh, all the restrooms here, uh, I looked at the floor from, uh, Hamlin Elementary, every restroom here has asbestos tile, so that has to be done first. And once that's done, then we'll, we'll put this room in tile, this room in tile is the best way to go. The actual restroom, very appealing, uh, easy to control the odors if you're talking about. The other thing is, on the restrooms, we've replaced all the partitions, uh, boys and girls side over here, we put in the, uh, it's a molded type plastic, and all the restrooms, you've done all that, and they, you just have to address, uh, the asbestos and the tile floor. Uh, upstairs, air conditioning units, uh, we did address a couple of those, uh, start of the year, we addressed a couple of issues with those, one of them, the pan, had to come up, and, uh, plastic pans, we replaced it with an old pan. Biggest problem with what you've got in this school, in this school, is the units that you have are not like the units we're seeing here, you won't see the air's coming out of the sewer. These units are mounted on a wall, a wall unit. The way these wall units work is they'll pull the air from the bottom up around out to the top that you return, it's going to take around the panel bypass. The problem with that is that, in the bottom is your pan, your condensation pan, and in that pan, when you're pulling dirt up, we've changed filters and pencils, erasers, everything, floral, any of these filters, it just sucks everything up into a pan. Or it fills the condensation pan up with dirt, we've tried putting tablets in there and different things. Unfortunately, because of the nature of the equipment, it's going to get dirt, and it's going to stop up to three quarter of that is all that it has right now. So when we run them into that, that dirt tends to clog that drain up, once we unstop that drain, then, uh, it lasts for a while, and we have to do it again. That's just, that's just the nature of the units that you have. Gravel road, uh, when you're talking about over here, I looked at this, uh, the elevation, which we're talking about, was correct, you probably have closer to five to six inches between there and going up, up on the car. Problem with putting gravel there, we can put the gravel there, that's, uh, that's all, if you want to drive a gravel. But the problem is, you don't have much to work with as far as width goes to make an elevation preferable to get up on there. Once, once you start using that gravel, starts moving, then you're going to push the gravel back. If we have more room to elevate the gravel, gradually bring it back, we'll be a whole lot better. Maybe better to look at possibly adding some concrete or sloping it down, we have to dig it down a little bit, and adding, the concrete, but I, I personally think that the gravel, what you're saying, you're going to gravel, I think the gravel will just, it will just make it worse. I think the best way would be to come in there, maybe come back maybe four feet, and take it and slope it down, and bring the gravel, or, or the concrete down. Problem about kind of back toward Hill Road, three doors, we heal. Uh, on, uh, also, on, um, we have another issue that's, uh, I have a report from the, uh, this is a report for, uh, room one oh one, on the elementary side, on September the eleventh, I was concerned with mold. We did have the Office of, uh, School Facilities come down, in this case, uh, Mr. Dave Bailey came down and investigated this, looked at this upon my request, as is my, uh, my concern, to do an air quality thing about there.
Did they do an air quality test?
Yes, in that room, in that room. Now, addressing, addressing another issue on the air quality test, I agree with you, air quality is very important to everyone. We've got Ken Hubert from the same Office of School Facilities, uh, which he reports assistance to pretend at schools, and this is what they do. He was here last Friday doing the air quality assessment of the air that we're talking about, and unfortunately, he, he's been busy, I'm, I'm, based on an email he sent me, uh, last night, he's going to have a full report for us tomorrow. What, what findings were, what he was, uh, thinking you need to address, and different things.
Now, I'm, I'm, is it more than that one room?
What, what I had him come in and do is, not the one room, the one room we're talking about, was the art room originally, we had the issue there.
Is that what the results are?
This one is a room that was up here where a teacher thought that the mold was blowing into a classroom, and I immediately had, uh, Mr. Bailey come down to look at it. It was the dust and dirt in units, it was the dust out of units that were blown out. That's another thing we were talking about, these units on the wall, we've got to do some magnet talk. And what I mean by magnet talk, they've got to be taken apart and cleaned fairly often, they, for twelve years, I've never found anything to be cleaned. You've got to clean the squirrel cages, you've got to clean the dust and dirt, because the way they pull things up in it, they're just guilty dirty, and when they get that way, then the dirt, when you turn them, then it blows out dust balls and dirt balls.
I imagine, I mean, as far as the, any immediate concern they may have about the, the quality of the air in this room, now, I know this, in the last few days, of, uh, air quality test done at heart by the Health Department. Has, has anything like that occurred in the art room at those adjacent rooms?
This area, uh, not that I know of here, I know that Ken done his report Friday, he was here all day Friday, in the basement area, doing an assessment in that basement area.
Is it going to be similar to what the Health Department did?
His is a little bit more in detail than what the Health Department did. What the Health Department did at heart, they were checking for, uh, carbon monoxide, different things from, uh, sewer gases.
What they're doing around the art room and those adjacent rooms, is, are they doing that or more than that?
They're doing, they're doing, what he's doing is, is assessing the air quality. In other words, what, what we've got coming out of these air units, what we've got in the air, is it, is it good quality air, based on our standards?
Right, to make these people feel comfortable and say, what was coming, can, will such a test, will his test make them feel that way, or are we need an additional type test?
I, I think once we look at his report, we can make an assessment on it, just to give you what he said here, and this is, I don't know if you've got, you know, he said. Uh, he said, "I found some pro, uh, programming codes that are causing some issues, there were visible mold in a few rooms on high insulation, uh, ceiling tiles, but not so much in any occupied classrooms. We had a bad chilled water valve, a bad humidity sensor, issues with the combustion air damper in the boiler room, dirty unit ventilators, basic humid with dirt, and plants." Uh, no, he says nothing real earth shattering, but that there, but there are some things that should be addressed to prevent any health risks. So I'll wait for his full report.
You're just waiting on those?
Yeah, I'll wait for his report tomorrow, and we'll address everything that he's done to do that.
You'll communicate that, I'm sure that Mr. Perry will say a bit.
And that's all the things that we've, uh, and, uh, and Mr. McKip and I have talked about, is, and we've done, we've looked at some issues when I first started, when school first started, when we had some air conditioning issues in the unit on pool. We came in on the weekend, and we were able to blow out some lines and clean out some poils where the working problems, and the process we cleaned the units. And this unit on one oh one, it was still just dirt, it was really dirty, and I have technician there, and he cleaned it all day. I, I really think, well, we're going to address it and try to get it off, but, uh, when you're in the heat season, it's not going to be as relevant as it is right now with the cooling, because you've got, you've got cold water, and you've got different moisture. Heat is a little different than moisture, moisture is what modifies, and getting heat, that like, that is a little different. But what we want to do is, we want to go through each unit, clean, and control, because the nature of the unit that mounts to the wall, everything is just, all your dirt, and I said sometimes, I don't know, maybe, that's why we use that to suck up the dirt, because if it's the dirt on, it sucks it out.
Don't give them any ideas.
It's either the way I'm pushing the dirt now, or it's, it's, it's the issue.
It's like putting it out of the rug.
Yeah, just touch it right out.
I'm not sure who the right person to do this is, it may be someone in Mr. McKip's office, but I know with the issues we've had at the high school, with Chiller, with mold in a couple classrooms, with these issues of mold. I also know from, from my private life, where I have done extensive litigation in the area of mold, that mold isn't near the problem people think it is. It's not something we want, it's not something we like, but I don't think people are well-educated on the actual health dangers of mold, what is required, what kind of illnesses are actually caused by mold. I would like somebody to consider a brief educational handout for personnel that have these concerns. The mold scare in this country came from horrible Chinese drywall. That's what it came from, mold was never considered a problem in our country, and, and I agree, it's nasty, we don't want it in our classrooms, we should be cleaning, we should be properly ventilated, we shouldn't have mold. But how many times have we had requests for air quality inspections based on visible mold, just this year? It isn't necessary, probably ninety-eight times out of a hundred, and that, that, that's coming from my private world, where I do this kind of work, and I understand how all this works, but still, people, people don't know that. In, in the public world, that, well, they don't have my background, they don't know that and they're concerned, when they're concerned, they come to us, we have to lay their fears. But I think a little bit of education in this area from someone would help a lot in these issues.
And I agree with you, Mr. Baker, I told, I didn't realize this, when you get into, uh, we all defer to the dim word, the low word, when you get into the mold, uh, what the state and what the requirements are, even the EPA doesn't have a set value on what is, is visible mold.
There's no standard.
And we're all, we're all going to be breathing mold, that's just part of, somewhere, you, you know, you go somewhere. But Ken has offered to come into a board meeting and discuss this with us, I already talked to him about that, and we could also get other people to the business department. He's offered to come in to the next afternoon meeting and have a conversation, because he would explain it to me, you know, my concern was, you know, you see mold. But then, when he comes back and he says, "Well, the court's prepared, and they're getting all these parts, it's, it's well within, way within your limits of what EPA says," so.
Right.
I agree with what you're saying.
I, I think that's a good idea, but I think we also need some way to convey that to all of the schools. And if there are certain signs, certain types of mold that do present a danger, our educators need to know how to recognize that, so that they can prioritize and call and say, "Hey, look, I have some of this mold, I think it's really bad." Not the good, normal stuff, the really bad stuff, can we get somebody to test it? Because I, I mean, I know it's, there are only so many of these people that come out and do this testing. And I would hate to have, uh, you know, a small package of bad mold in the classroom parts, that nobody knows what to look for, and we have ten big packages at four other schools that are not going to be at arm. But that's where we're focusing our efforts because of the size, and that really has little to do with it. So anyway, I'm on the soapbox, I'm off now, thank you.
There may be some handles or something out there in the Health Department, or even the State Department, that, that we can use to share with our employees and parents.
I mean, I, I think you just need to tell people what to look for, and there's, I mean, and I'll tell this since it was my own daughter. When there was mold discovered in one of the rooms at the high school, I got a frantic text from my daughter. "Dad, what's going on? There's mold in the classroom, all of the students that have been in that classroom, we're all dead, we, here, we have bronchitis, we're coughing, we're sick." I'm like, "Great, when were you in there?" "Yesterday, forget it, mold and new cells just take a long time to develop, there's nothing wrong with any of you, but we're all sick, Dad, we're all sick, it has to be mold, that's the only thing we've all done." "When'd they find it?" "Yesterday, was it there the day before?" "No." "Lindsay, you're not sick, it's not from anything in the classroom." "Oh, by the way, honey, they had a test, they had a test done today, and it was normal, everything's good." "Oh, okay, last I heard of it." But misinformation, disinformation, luckily, luckily it was my daughter that called me, representing a group of her fellow students, or texted me, representing a group of her fellow students, and I was able to clarify it. But a lot of other kids wouldn't have had that background or that resource, and before you know it, we would have had a mold epidemic at Lincoln County High School. I nipped that one in the bud, I hope, but, but people don't know, they hear the mold word and they're scared to death. So a little bit of education goes a long way, Jeff, if there's something we can do, I mean, just something.
He's right, and frantic, yeah.
I know. Jeff was involved in my daughter's frantic one that day too.
That's right.
Jeff helped get me some information to disseminate that, you know, oftentimes, things are, are received a lot better coming from unofficial channels, unofficial channels.
Can I make, can I make?
Sure.
Um, I agree with you, most of the time, it is one way out of one, but you as a parent, uh, if you had a child who had severe allergies of any kind, and we all know there are children out there with asthma or allergies. Um, for instance, I walked in, my second day of building, and saw them cleaning out the, the art room down there, saw the materials. Uh, if that, if that child came home, and I found out that they were in a room that, where all the paper products could have been covered with mold, or the paper products or anything else is, and you can't clean it in a day's time, you won't be able to clean it in at least time, most chances of getting mold free. Even if there's a chance of sending a child into a severe allergic reaction, is it not worth taking the precaution to make sure that it doesn't happen, just to alleviate that, that one chance?
Well, in, in, in the perfect world, yes, in the perfect world, I agree with you, we should eliminate the possibility of every potential hazard. We should have an absolutely safe school environment where no one can ever be injured.
And I know we're all limited on funds, and it's going to get worse.
It, it, it doesn't even come down to funds, it comes down to practicality, in a utopian world, we would have this perfect school, I just mentioned, but we don't. We do the best that we can to protect the greatest number of children that we have, what's the mold tolerance level for your hypothetical child? Does it have a lower mold tolerance than does the average student? I believe you said it was a child that was allergic to mold, that child, I agree, I mean, first thing I said was, we should get all the mold out of the camp, no one should have to come into a classroom with mold. The situation you talk about, we shouldn't have to start with. I've, I've done that in my personal life, go into an old building to clean something out, and the books be covered with mold, you open them, it flies everywhere, that's not what we want our kids seeing. Um, but that's, that's the exception, rather than the rule, that we're no children in that environment, were there?
No, not yet.
Right, and, and until that was cleaning, that, that's one that we caught, whether that was dangerous mold or not, because. That, that's one that we caught, whether that was dangerous mold or not, because quite frankly, as Mr. Gosdy mentioned, the mold levels in that room were probably no higher than the mold score levels you get on a rainy, wet day out here at certain times of the year. And the, the statistics and science will bear that out. That's why I want people to be educated. But you're right.
Well, I agree with Mr. Baker. The education part, I was educated, when it started, the reaction to mold, my reaction may be greater than the student's reaction to mold, and they may not be allergic to anything, but how they react. That's the same thing when it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt if you just think there's that mold. It's just a, an education, it educated me, because I didn't realize, you know, you see the mold, you know, you take automatically, it's not that level of your reaction to mold.
But, and you can have a child that's been tested sensitive to mold, to different kinds of mold, and that child might have a reaction to mold at a level that's tenfold below the P E L, the personal exposure limit, or deemed safe level limit. So, you, you know, the, the question is somewhat loaded, and that you can't protect everybody from everything, you have individual susceptibility, everyone responds to every substance in the universe differently, but we shouldn't have anybody walking into the room you described earlier. That's not what I'm saying at all, but from my personal experience as a parent and as a board member, I've seen this year already three or four times that people have had valid concerns over mold. They were valid, not because it was a real concern, but because people don't understand the nature of mold. Media sensationalism has demonized mold as this killer substance, and it's been with us since the beginning of time. But anyway.
Education's never bad.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
Well, that's what we'll try to get to, so we can, to get that word out there. Have you guys come away with my idea, Brad?
I think Mr. Gosny will agree with me. When you've got this kind of fully system, and others know for mold, if you can go to any school system in West Virginia, it's got chillers, you will find mold in someplace.
It's the moisture of it, and you're going to have it. And if you look at what's happened in some of the other schools in, in all counties, we're really in pretty good shape, but what they're doing, they're dealing with pretty extreme. Everything, and I think everything's serious, but at the same time, this type of system, when you have water and you have coal, it's a, it's a balancing factor.
Probably the name of it, a lot of these people were dead whenever, last time I was here, when Ferguson was here then, we still had radiator, because now that we've got air system.
We agree with that. Anything else, Greg? Okay. All right.
I do want to also say that Carol had mentioned earlier about the A D, you know, asking educate parents, and I actually, last year, the other year, when we started hearing about it, I mean, of course it was out there that that was coming, and I just, I told him that, you know, no matter what grade does come out, please be assured that your child is getting quality education right now. So I, I, you know, I want them to know that, so when people start talking over about the ball field, or wherever, that they can say, yes, you know, our children are getting good education, and so. And also, I want to say, to Greg, don't forget to plug those back in, because I don't have milk in the morning, yes, I'm calling.
Tins, tins.
And then I can write you a.
Yeah, I'm getting older, tins supposed to handle.
Christine has.
And I was going to let you do a couple of tricks, but.
I made a note, too, Mr. King.
We've all.
I was.
Is Haven going to do a trick?
She's tired. Well, I'm going to have her do a couple, but she's still tired.
She thinks I'm going out that door.
Oh, she's got a little tree.
I left a tree, so Carol is.
Oh.
I have a little kindergarten boy, he loves to do this. Now he will, this is one of the little boys that we had trouble with, and his behavior was really bad at class, so actually, I didn't see where he called for his dad to come, and I said, "Just let me take Haven down there and get him." And so we did, and he was walking him, and he would just walk him like he knew how to walk a dog, you know, have him, have a ride there, and I said, "How she taught you to do that?" And he said, "My dad did." So now, he comes to my office, and he's, you know, follows directions and doing everything he needs to do, but he loves to take her up in one of the hallways, and, let's see, and he loves to take her up the hallways, and we tell her to stay, and then we walk all the way to the end of the hall, and then, but now he'll go, "Stay," real mean, and I said, "No, we don't say it really mean, just turn." So, and then one day, it was a good lesson for him because she didn't stay, and he turned her, he said, "She's coming." And so I said, "Well, then we have to take her back, and she has to follow the rules just like we do." So it was kind of a good lesson for him, so, "Stay, stay." She'll think, "I'm leaving."
What?
And he loves, you know, we get all the way down to the other hall, and, and sometimes we'll do it when kids are walking by, just to see if she'll do it, and then he yells, "Frito!"
That's a word we don't like.
There you go.
Good girl.
And she does a cute other, but that's, oh. And, but she's, the kids just love her, and she's kind of like, we're a true family, because they'll just walk by, and they say, "Hi, Haven," and pet her, and go on by, you know, and they all look out for her, we go into the classroom, and I was telling Mr. Priestley that she is really coming to her own, she's, you know, going to be a year old, and I was a little worried coming back from the summer, but she can, I don't have to hold her leash, she'll walk down the hall with me, right beside me. We'll go in a classroom, I'll do an observation, or check lesson plans, whatever I'm doing, and she'll just go around, the kids just touch her, and she goes around, as soon as I open that door to the leash, bam, she's there with me, so she goes, but she cries too much when I'm gone. She's too, everybody says she's too attached to you, and she is, but she's done very well with the kids, so it's been a good experience, so.
That's right.
She's no Z, though. She gets under Jeff's desk when I take her. Over there, doesn't she? All right.
Well, we would, you know, once again, just thank all of you all, all of your LSIC members, all you do, and stand, and come out, you don't have to, the extra things you do, we appreciate that, and sort of school does. Christine, we know the shared conditions work, don't we?
Yes, we sure do.
I know it's Christine, I see her, she's like me.
And I do want to, we do want to say, too, that our windows, I know we mentioned those last year, because we knew where we're getting them, but they're just beautiful. They've just made such a big difference in the elementary, so thank you very much.
We appreciate all you all do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And if you all would like to leave, you want to send this one this.
Is your custodian still here?
Okay, that concludes our LSIC reports. Let's go to the administrative section. Somebody like to make a motion? Brad made a motion, seconded by Larry. Mr. McKip.
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, radical student transfers for the 2016-2017 school year. Item C, Grand Canyon University student, Jordan Humble, to perform fifteen hours of observation in Hart's PKA during the fall semester. Item D, Marshall University psychology students, Rebecca Winke and Barbie Norwood, to complete required graduate school hours during the fall semester under the supervision of leading psychologist, Carlo Doni. Item E, designation of the following employees to provide specialized healthcare, 2016-2017 school year. Item F is an agreement with Tina Short to provide transportation for a student to West Hamlin Elementary School for the 2016-2017 school year, according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached, funded through special education. Item G, an agreement with Teresa Beck to provide transportation for a student to Lincoln County High School for the 2016-2017 school year, according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached, and is also funded through special education. Item H, agreements with the following supervisory aids for the 2016-2017 school year, in accordance with provisions of West Virginia Code, eighteen A dash five dash eight. Item I, adoption of the resolution declaring the week of September twenty-sixth through the thirtieth of two thousand sixteen, as West Virginia Association of Retired Schools And item J, outstate transit for the following personnel.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that, if you reside in Green Con? Not then, call for the questions. All in favor of the administrative items? Is that an all yes?
Yes.
All right, let's go to the finance section, please. Is there a motion? Seconded. Seconded by Carol.
Schedule invoices, probably nine hundred, one thousand, four hundred, sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, attached. Any questions, you can always come to the office and figure out whatever you need to know. County bids for the following retired employees paid for the county's excess levy, as employees elected to receive dental vision benefits.
And my understanding, in our next meeting, you're going to give your last presentation, because everybody makes a notice. Prepare for that.
I have all the information.
Whatever. Okay. All in favor of the finance, is that an all yes?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel, please. Ray. Larry, seconded that. Bill?
Okay, item A, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of FBI C I B clearance per West Virginia Code eighteen A dash three dash one. That's one of our alternative certification teachers that has passed the test and is, will be certified, take the classes through the agreement we have with Risa and the State Department to become certified, special ed. Okay, item B, employment of service personnel. Item C, employment of service personnel pending return of the regular employee. Item D, please strike Keisha Clay and write in Kelly Aggins. Keisha pulled her bid, and that would be from county RIF list to Lincoln County Special Ed, part-time, it's half-time. Item E, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item F, resignations and retirements. We have abolished personnel posting, it's the kindergarten job at West Hamlin. We had a third grade teacher that moved into that position, and a principal can move with agreement of the teacher and the principal anytime during the year, so we will be posting that third grade, since that third grade teacher moved into the kindergarten. That's the reason we're abolishing the kindergarten position, kindergarten posting. And then last, we had the reclassification of Laura Stapleton, which was a midway, last year, she had the ECAT certification and should have been getting paid a, a little bit of a supplement each month, and that's going to be corrected.
Do you have any questions? You have me excited every minute, I thought we didn't need one of those kindergarten kids.
No, no.
One more.
No, and then on the list, the update I give you, the only changes was at West Hamlin, where it says third grade post, but the new position we really added was kindergarten to, just to keep track of what we did do. And then at the high school, we hired a, a special ed teacher this week, so we're just down two special ed teachers over there. Nothing else changed.
Initial bottom, this is the number added this year?
That is the number added this, this year, yes.
All right. No further questions. Is that an all yes on the personnel?
Yes.
All yes there. All right, come down to comments from the center.
Just had Billy, right? I almost hesitate to ask this, but in, in terms of athletic transportation, I know that probably falls on his odds of view for the most part, but last week, we had girl soccer team, the high school girl soccer team had a scheduled game at Ravenswood, had been scheduled for months, and when it came time for the bus to be available, there was no bus, or bus operator, or something available, there just wasn't there, was no bus or operator available. So the game had to be canceled. Luckily, they were able to reschedule it. I realize that sometimes certain things like that happen, and that day, I pointed out to the soccer coach that the board had passed the policy, we're in this position or this situation, with approval of the principal, the superintendent, parents could have transported the kids. Unfortunately, there's thirty-three soccer players, and given the two-hour window that was available to seek alternative transportation, decision was made to cancel and reschedule the game. That's important, one, because that's a game that they may not have gotten back, and two, because in soccer, to qualify for the sectionals, which if our girls continue to do well, will probably be held here for the first time in history, you have to have a certain number of games played, and I just, I wonder, there are a lot of different athletic events, what, is there a priority, what steps do we take to make sure? I mean, for instance, there's a soccer game at Wyoming East on October fourth, that's a huge drive. The bus needs to leave at one o'clock, twelve-thirty, one-thirty, something like that in the afternoon to make the game. What provisions, or what steps do we take, what do we require of our coaches or athletic programs to let us know when we need buses, and what do we do to make sure they're available?
We try to make those decisions early in the day, because our number one priority is making sure we get our students home at evenings.
Right.
And the situation of recent is that we run into occasions where we don't have enough bus operators, but, you know, they call in, it may be at the last minute, the afternoon, something's come up, maybe we're ill, and we can't make the run, so that leaves Mr. Cummings, his department over there screaming to try to cover, to make sure that we can get our students home at evenings. This, this has been an ongoing issue for the past three to four years. At one time, we had the issue not only of having enough bus operators, but we also had issues with our buses. So this is something we try to avoid. We have a new round of candidates to become bus operators that have already started into the class. We hope that'll help alleviate some of these concerns, may not help us in fall sport, certainly when we get into the winter sports, we'll be in a better position. We do make every effort to make those calls early when we can.
This instance here, are we going to say then that there was someone assigned to, that run was none, that someone was to make it, and they just couldn't get drivers?
Based on what Mr. Baker was shooting with us, yes. If it's that far out, we knew the game was scheduled, there was a plan, someone was scheduled to take that trip.
But they had to make another regular run, or fill in for another driver somewhere to make sure the kids got home.
Right.
Well, that was the explanation I provided without knowing, because I knew, I knew, we just had a presentation from Rod not long ago, he said we have, what, eight or ten extra buses? So I didn't think it was a bus issue, I assumed it was probably an operator issue. But it was just something, I wanted to know if we could, I mean, if we don't have people hired that can substitute as bus operator, there's not a lot we can do, and it sounds like we have some more hired that are in the training phase, but they're just not available to us now, so cross our fingers, right?
Learn is not unique to us, the other counties are struggling with the same issue right now.
You would say with unemployment as it is? But.
What you would like to see there is that communicated to the coach as quickly as possible, so you might make some other arrangements, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it wasn't communicated quickly that day, I, I mean, I don't know that it was, I'm just.
I'll check into it. I'll try to find out as much as I can, let you know what happened like that. This is a Ravenswood trip, right?
Yeah, it was Ravenswood. They were able to reschedule the game for the very last makeup day of the season, so if something happens that we missed the Wyoming East game, or one of these other games, because transportation isn't available, we may not be eligible for the sectionals, which otherwise we would have held posted here based on our record for the first time in history at school. Hate to see that happen. Sectionals are the seventeenth. Wyoming East, I believe, is October fourth. Yeah, Wyoming East is October fourth, and they've requested a bus to leave at one-thirty. It's a six o'clock game, and requested a bus to leave at one-thirty.
Usually, banks don't have a truck. Kids might run, I tell.
No.
Ragus Wood Run would have been a pretty nice run, too. Straight down seventy-seven.
This one's rather time-consuming, it's not about my monetary standpoint.
I want about three runs.
All right, Ray, say you want that.
That's it for me.
I have a question, probably for, right, is it true that this may be a rumor that some of those rooms at West Hamlin are not being used due to mold?
The room at West Hamlin?
The room at West Hamlin may not be being used because of mold?
No, from my understanding was that I sent, I sent, I sent three custodians over during our training to clean that room. It was never done. So when Mr. Smith, the substitute I talked to him about, he actually got one of the custodians to clean the room. The room is ready to be moved back in, and I thought, by the email I got from Mr. Roy last week, that last Friday they were moving someone in the room.
I've talked to him since then, and he's concerned about moving someone in there. He just, Mr. Roy still has some doubt whether or not that room is ready to be moved back into and on. So I just had an opportunity to share that with you, but he has, it was yesterday morning that I spoke, and he decided, Dr. Roy, he can teach her back in there, so that room is vacant right now.
He asked me Friday if I could send Mickels over to move the person to the room, that's where he has custodians, who were there for three days to do that. I didn't have any pictures of the person.
So what's the plan right now? Does, let me have to go and check that out first?
We'll just have to check there, make sure that it's safe and protected.
Well, Mr. Hugo didn't check that out. You've got the email from Hill on that room already.
That's why I told Mr. Roy.
Roy had that room checked before that.
It was apparent that told me that, so I, you know, I didn't know, I just thought my dad has...
That is true.
But that room had all the inspection, it's A-OK.
But Mr. Roy is still...
He's reluctant. Joyfully.
Even after being made aware that it had been tested?
I think maybe just concerns with the teacher, maybe some of the parents.
Maybe they need to know all these things that have happened, so...
And I think the teacher, whatever he's done, arrangements he's made, she's perfectly happy in her new room. I think they have something to do with it, too. Maybe she doesn't want to move at this point, so...
That's another issue. Mr. Mickel, whenever we had Mr. Hugo out there, he looked at that room, and there was another issue out in the mobile, they heard the M-word, and they had it, he looked at that room all the time.
They had a four-letter score.
They had Mickels over there that was blowing out, they poured it on top there, it was blowing out.
Oh, well.
It was deadly mold spores in their mind, correct?
Okay, got it. Carol. If you all would take on these, there's an extra name. Pass that to Mr. Adonkey, please. Everyone, go home. This is just something, Mr. Mickel, when I went to a recent meeting the other day, and this was something that was passed out there, I just wanted to make everyone aware of it, it got my attention, and it's regarding Medicaid reimbursement comparing in our Reissa monies one year to the next. And you can see there, in our category, the, if you go down to, I guess the third compound down, the amount of money that we, less amount of money that we have compared to what we had in prior year, sixty-nine percent, if you'll notice on the far right, that's the state average of the amount of money that has been lost in reimbursements here. Now, if you look at Wayne County, and some, you could just look at the amounts of money that they were giving that they no longer have. Now, at the bottom, this one here particularly got my attention, because at one time, apparently, I talked to Mr. Level, who's a special education person on the side, about IEP meetings and payments that are required for that and all, but now, according to the lady that gave this presentation, Reissa, we no longer can be reimbursed for IEP meetings. At one time, we, county's got reimbursement for IEP meetings, you know, those are required for every special ed student every year annually at the end of the year, and oftentimes you'll have, depending on the student, you may have more than just the teacher and the aide and the classroom teacher, the people at the school. You may have outside therapists and people like that that have to come in, too. So obviously, there must be some costs involved with those people, but you can see the amount of money that we, I did that cipher there for you, Rob, grabbing, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in one year, we're going to get less in this category right here on IEP reimbursement. Now, I asked, because I was a little bit wondering if I was really understanding this correctly, so I asked the lady that was giving this, you know, these are all, this is all federal money, you know, it's Medicaid money, so this is a change apparently in the federal guidelines, that this is no longer reimbursable for county or schools in general. But you can just see the amount of money there, and the reason I have to state this, and I've talked with Mr. Mickel about this, you know, we have already talked about the loss of it, Roland, I think maybe that's getting a little bit better, but come for this school year, you know, every dollar counts, and if we're losing monies in an area like this, and I'm going to ask Jeff to elaborate a little bit about what these monies can be spent on.
Well, I'm going to hand it over to Ray, we talked about this today, and I'm just going to share with you just briefly what was done to this one, and what it's spent to our budget.
The first thing we did was move some money out of Medicaid when we realized we weren't going to get that much this year. We saw the drop last year, and this year we had money budgeted, we had salaries budgeted to it.
And when you say salaries, that's where, are we talking about strictly in special education, or are these monies?
They were aids in special ed, yeah.
Is that where these monies are all spent? Is the loss, I mean, is this money just a loss for special education, or does it affect other, just regular education? Or by taking it from regular ed to give to special ed, does it affect every dollar?
Well, the way Bill Shigman said, yeah, he probably knows more about that part than I do. But the first thing we did was move some money out, because we knew we weren't going to get as much if this trend continued. Evidently, the Medicaid rules have changed, if you can't bill for everything that you should be able to bill for. So we did that, so we moved that and absorbed that into the county funds, Fund Eleven. Second thing we did, Ricky Lowe probably knows more about this than most people, because that's kind of, you know, special ed's her field, and she said, I can't bill if I have these employees getting paid federal dollars, so she went, she looked at everybody who was able to bill what they bill for, and she tried to maximize our ability to bill. So we moved some people from federal money to county money and moved, and offset that by moving people who couldn't bill as much, or who couldn't bill at all, to the federal side. So she saw that need, and we looked at that, and we made that move, so that should help us out going forward.
Actually increase our bill.
That's to increase our ability to bill, and there were, I think they changed the rules of the game, obviously, and she knew what those were, and she knew who did those kinds of services, so trying to plan ahead.
Do locally, because, you know, if you see this, the third compound has a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar figure, well, the three fifty-nine that we've lost for IEP reimbursements is a part of that, so that's still, there's twenty-one thousand dollars that must have come from something else that's changed there, but, you know, I think you're all doing what you can do to try to offset it. I just wondered, when I saw this, you know, when I see we're losing a half million dollars, or not quite a half, the three hundred and eighty, it gets my attention, so I just, I just thought that would be something that we might want to...
We're still waiting on a cost, so it's how old now?
Well, it's from when I was back there in special ed, that they were supposed to have to us that year, then they're supposed to have it last fall, then they're supposed to have it, and we expect that to be around two hundred and fifty thousand.
Sometimes it's wrong.
Well, it just doesn't affect us. I mentioned Wayne, because you can see, they lost eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in this area. And here, a week or so ago, I read an article where Wayne County, I think due to the decline in their revenues for this current year, coupled with this right here, they were like one point eight million dollars, had less money than they had budgeted for this school year, so they were already looking at what we want to do here, but we're hoping they definitely face, I think Ray will talk about our revenue the next week. And I just wanted to share that with you. The other thing I just want to mention, we did go, we had the West Virginia School Board Association meetings in Charleston, our state meetings, I thought this year's topics were probably more relevant than...
Danny, I...
I mean, sometimes you'll certainly have certain ones you like, but overall, I thought the agenda was very good. The A to F system we talked about here, you know, that was obviously on the, one of the things we talked about. The SSAC rules and all there's, Mr. Dolan talked about that, and that's something no one's really, you know, we hear about that, but he gave a real good explanation, and he was really informative in other topics, and of course, one of my favorites is the open meeting law. They talked a lot about that, and, you know, when the attorney was there, and you were there, I even had to get up and ask him a question. It got some discussion generated there, but it was an area that, you know, people don't understand the open meetings law, and I said, I wish Sean could be here.
Do I have a question? It's because... So Sean can educate. There you go.
Exactly, exactly.
On his sake, Tom.
But it was, that was, those sessions are the kind you don't mind going to, because you learn something about what's going on, you know, sometimes we go to things, what are we doing here? Yes, sir, Ms. Booker.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm always, as you know, highly critical of those meetings.
I know that.
Every session, to me, was valuable, very important. I was really impressed with this year's session. It was a very valuable session.
I don't, Dr. O'Call, that, you know, just this year's ago, maybe that, you know, we fill out those evaluation forms, and we give our input, you know, like, somebody must be reading. Anyway, I just wanted to share that, what we had done. Okay. And I now...
How about some good news?
Listen to Mr. Mickel.
Perhaps some good news.
Okay.
Since the last time I updated you on our enrollment numbers, we have had a dramatic increase of nearly one hundred students.
Oh, my God.
Most of those students are thirty, approximately thirty in New Ball, thirty-year Hamlin PKA and twenty-three at Lincoln County High School, and then all schools have seen a bump. The biggest increases have been at those three schools. So they come from...
Yeah, that was...
Some are no-shows, there are students that we had that were enrolled in the short first weeks of school, and weren't included in those numbers. Others are just our new people that are just moving into the area, which, you know, the last time I spoke to you, we were looking at a loss of approximately a hundred and eighty students, and that number is now somewhere between eighty and ninety. We have, we have submitted our official enrollment numbers, our second month report the first of October, at that point, the numbers will become official. Not that that's, you know, still a big loss, enroll and find, you know, funding that we'll receive from the State Department, but it is much better news.
It's not like the one point two, you get...
They're going like a half million dollars.
That's not good.
But, yeah. We still have a week and a half. I talked to Mary Infanton today, but Dubois, I believe she told me she's getting around four hundred students this week. It's great.
Is he part of the recruit, going with the school staff?
With Mr. Bailey's retirement, which the board approved, and Mr. Bailey's just, he's a wonderful man, he's been a great technology director, we're going to miss him, we have an opportunity to revamp that position, to include some curriculum responsibilities. Not that Danny did some things in curriculum, served on the curriculum team, and his role, you know, primarily, Mr. Bailey's functions was technology and assessment, so we want to add a curriculum piece to this and give that position some more responsibilities in that area, which ties into the technology, how technology is being used as an instructional tool. And in doing so, Mr. King, Mr. Level, and I, through our conversations, and Mr. King talking to the State Department, we have an opportunity to retitle that position so it becomes a Director of Curriculum Assessment and Technology, and we can use federal funds to pay for eighty percent of the position, which is an awesome opportunity.
Is it all county funds right now?
So right now, it's entirely funded through county funds. We can save a significant chunk of money by, just making some changes in the roles and responsibilities of that position. So Mr. Level worked today, or has worked this week, I should say, and has put together a draft job description that I want you to look at, and then ask if you have anything about any suggestions you just sent over to Mr. Level, in hopes that when we come back to you next Tuesday, we would have this job description on the origin for you to officially approve. So I'd like for you to take a look at it, and see if you've got any thoughts or suggestions regarding the position, and, because we'd like to post it as quick as we can to get this out there a few weeks later. I can stay looking at those, I already see a mistake.
I'll fix it. We can put it on Tuesday, and we'll go out next week. I just ask if you do, we can, Fred will be working on, as far as, or Victor's due tomorrow, we'll be, if you can, have the opportunity to look at and see if you have any changes, so we can do that by, well, our agenda will go out on Thursday, but we always kind of get on Wednesday.
But the functions and duties that you'll see listed are, Mr. Level pulled those from the job description when Danny was first hired into the central office, and then we had reached out to other, Mr. King did some research, found some other job descriptions out there that he shared with us, to pull some of these other areas in, particularly those pertaining to curriculum. You can see that qualifications, you know, it's five years teaching experience, three years administrative experience, knowledge of policy twenty-five, ten.
Is this the two hundred and forty?
Danny's two forty, he's remaining two hundred and forty days in this position. So I appreciate you to feedback each other.
Well, we'll start to do that. There's two more.
Thanks, thanks.
All right. If no one has anything else, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, at one o'clock. If anyone makes a motion? Seconded by Larry, is that an all yes?